All in favor of this meeting of the Escanaba City Council? June 5th, 2025. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Morton?
Here.
Councilor Boshaw?
Here.
Councilor Dubois?
Here.
Councilor Flath?
Here.
Mayor Amel?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, seeking approval and/or corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of May 15th, 2025.
Sumo.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, seeking approval and/or corrections to the minutes of the special meeting of May 22nd, 2025.
Sumo.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, seeking approval and/or adjustments to the current agenda as written.
No approval.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, is there any conflict of interest needing to be declared by members of council pertaining to items on the agenda?
I do have one Labor Day celebration.
Thank you. For the conflicts of interest needing to be declared by members of council. Thank you. At this time, we will hear brief public comments pertaining to items on the agenda. If you wish to make a comment, please approach the podium, state your name, place of residence, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Hearing none. We currently have no public hearing scheduled, and we have no unfinished business on the docket. Moving on to new business. Item number one. Presentation. 2024 Planning Commission Annual Report. Planning and zoning.
During a regular meeting of the Planning Commission on May 8th, 2025, a motion was made to approve the Planning Commission annual report and work plan as presented before them and submit for city council for review in accordance with the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, PA 33 of 2008. I do have Joey Walker here, our planning and zoning administrator, to answer questions and, you know, kind of give an evaluation of...I think it's a good time, even though to look back at the annual report, but kind of give a vision of what's coming forward as we're going through the master plan here. You know, I think the annual reports, paging through it, is fairly self-explanatory of, you know, permit activity, member activity, different decisions that were made on site plans throughout the year. I think one thing that, you know, I would just point out, I think it's a really important point, looking at the master plan review page of this. And, you know, just that kind of gives the high level elements of this, and, you know, one of these items being are the goals and priorities of the plan in sync with the goals and priorities appointed and elected officials. And this item specifically talks about, you know, the goals and priorities being in alignment, but also kind of gaining momentum current year, last year, and as we look forward. Both public and private sector investment seems to be starting to achieve some of the outcomes of, or some of the goals of the plan. But Joey, do you have anything more to add? Kind of where we're at, or what? Anything else to say about the annual report?
Yeah, thank you, Jim, and hi, everyone. First, I just wanted to thank my lovely Secretary Bree Ekhlid for putting this together. This actually happened in sort of the turnover period before I came on board, so the bulk of the work is hers, and she did a great job. A few things I wanted to touch on were attendance. When I came on, we had two planning commissioners that had previously resigned, one that resigned shortly after I came on, and then we had two more with attendance issues. One resigned, and one, as I'm sure you remember, was removed. We've had an applicant come on board. She's already undergone some training. Sue Roll, she's been great. So we're already starting to refill that board. We have another applicant on the way. I'm not sure if that's on the agenda, Phil?
We have...
An appointment tonight.
An appointment tonight.
Correct. Sure thing. But yeah, we're still looking for at least one new member, as well as filling a vacancy on the ZBA. So still improving in that aspect, but we're gonna have a lot less attendance issues, I think. And then the new members are already excited about training and asking me about it. And once we get sort of out of our busy season of summer here, and there's a bit less on the docket, I think we'll be able to get more of that underway. We're excited to finish the master plan. The PC has been reviewing more draft chapters as we go, and we recently had our master plan charrette. The attendance wasn't quite what we hoped, but it was really positive. The people that did show up, there were a lot of good ideas shared, and Beckett and Raiders kind of putting that together right now in a summary. Thank you for, Karen, for coming out. And like I said, still need a ZBA applicant and a PC applicant, so if you know anybody, please send them our way. But other than that, if you guys had any questions?
Was there anything that surprised you during that charrette after you calculated all the data?
Having been through one of these master plan processes before and been through a lot of different township and city and county zoning meetings, there was a lot of positivity, or sometimes it can be very negative. I think the charrette sort of framed things in the right way. It was asking people for their ideas and their visions. But yeah, I think there was a lot of openness to new things, and that's a positive sign for me.
Seeking a motion to approve the annual report. Make the motion to approve it.
Support.
Discussion. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Walker. New business. Item number two. Approval recommendation for banking services contract. HR Director, Treasurer.
Invitations to submit proposals for banking services were distributed to nine local financial institutions. After a thorough review of five submitted proposals, administration recommends awarding a three-year banking contract to First Bank. So we are currently with First Bank. What we did with the five different proposals, they all had different account types with different rates, with different fees. First Bank was the only one that did not include fees at all. And with the expected average balance, the First Bank proposal did come out with the highest interest earnings after fees. They've been a good partner so far. We never have banking issues, and if we need to move funds, it's always done very timely. So it was, you know, after evaluation, quantifying it, and looking back, it was a pretty easy recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Discussion. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Boshaw?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes. New business. Item number three. Approval excess workers' compensation insurance quote. HR Director.
Administration is requesting approval of the excess workers' compensation insurance quote from the Midwest for the upcoming two-year policy period. This policy is necessary in order for us to remain self-insured. This policy maintains the same coverage as the current agreement, with the only change being a premium increase of approximately 1% or about $800. The total premium for the two-year term is $154,312 to be paid in two equal installments of $77,156 each, due in July of each year. And our existing contract does expire on June 30th of 2025.
So the only question I have is, did we also shop around prior to this? Where were we at? I mean, just comparison, were they still low, or were they higher at other companies?
So we talked pretty closely with our representative at Myrma when we go through this, and unfortunately, Midwest is the only proposal. And it's who we've been with, and it's been good, but because of our size, it's, we're not big enough to really attract other providers here. You know, I think going forward, I mean, this has been working, and self-insured has been working very well. We historically haven't, we have a good claims history, but I do think it's worth, down the road, looking at what if we're not self-insured, and you provide coverage for the whole thing. I don't expect that it's necessarily gonna be better, but I think it's worth knowing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Support.
Further discussion on this item.
How long have you been self-insured?
I believe forever. I know well before I've been here, I can't speak to, you know, the early 2000s or 90s or anything like that, but I think recent history, we've always been.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on this item. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Councilor Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes. New business. Item number four. Approval special event application, Labor Day Celebration. Recreation.
Administration is recommending city council approval of a special event application to hold a Labor Day Celebration Parade and Beer Tent. The parade will go from the marketplace to the municipal dock on Luddington Street. Changes may be required if construction is taking place. And the event date and time is September 1st, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This would be the fifth annual event for the Labor Day Celebration.
No approval.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
New business. Item number five. Approval special event application, Radio Results Network Glock Party.
Administration sought council approval on behalf of Mindy Wills from RRN Radio for the closing of the 100 block of South 11th Street for the annual RRN Glock Party. Alcohol will be sold on all local requirements, and state LLC requirements will be followed, the event, or LLC requirements. The event date and time is July 25th, 2025, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, with setup beginning at 5:00 AM and teardown completed by noon on July 26th, 2025.
Sumo approval.
Support.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. New business. Item number six. Approval special event application, North Town Glock Party.
Christine Pepin is seeking city council approval to close the 1200 block of North 16th Street on July 19th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM for a North Town Glock Party for all current and former residents of the 1200 block of North 16th Street and Stevenson Avenue.
The only question there, did they speak with the fellow neighbors? There's no concern?
Yeah, I believe there was a letter in the packet that did discuss some outreach with the neighborhood.
Right.
Sumo approval.
Second. Further discussion on this item. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. New business. Item number seven. Approval Resolution Number 25-10 LMCC Brew Pub LLC Application.
Administration is requesting city council approval of LMCC Brew Pub LLC Social District Application. This is at 624 Luddington Street. I believe that is Herford Hops.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Discussion. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Boshaw?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes. New business. Item number eight. Resolution Number 25-11 Lee's Garden Winery Application.
Administration is requesting city council approval of a Lee's Garden Winery Social District Application.
No approval.
Support.
Further discussion. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Councilor Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes. New business. Item number nine. Approval Energy Waste Reduction. Opt-in to the MPPA Program.
Administration is requesting city council approval to opt into Michigan Public Power Agency's Energy Waste Reduction Program. The state of Michigan requires electric utilities to run an EWR program, that's Energy Waste Reduction Program, and this is budgeted for the '25-'26 fiscal year. The Electrical Advisory Committee recommended joining MPPA's program. So in anticipation of this coming up, this is, had come through council before about becoming a member of MPPA. There may be other benefits we look at down the road, but the primary reason was to possibly join this program. So been a lot of information. We, and I'll let Jerry Percola talk about what the program is, and what residents can expect, and how to use it, but just from something we have to do in the perspective of should we do this program, or a state-run program. The MPPA program, I believe, was about $120,000 a year cheaper. There was less money associated with administration or overhead of the program as well. And I thought some pretty nice features associated with if the program doesn't meet the requirements. I think there's some holdbacks, so that there are some performance obligations there. But I think, for everybody's sake, Jerry can talk about, you know, what this means and what residents can expect.
Okay, so Public Act 229, which was passed in 2023, requires all electric utilities to offer an energy waste reduction program. It requires a 1.5% savings in energy, and it's supposed to be over like an eight-year period. We obviously joined MPPA with anticipation of possibly joining their program. They sent out court requests to, I think it was 11 utilities, utilities that manage programs like this. They received, I believe, two quotes, and then they had the states. So Franklin Energy provided the best proposal, and compared to the states, and I shared that information with you, like Jim said, MPPA's program on an annual basis is $120,000 less than the state. So I did some rough calculations. The MPPA's program would be about a 2.3% increase, and I guess revenue that we would have to collect from our customers, the state's program would be about a 3.4%, significantly higher. So the program, we've used Franklin in the past in 2021. This is basically the energy rebate program. They're offering a low-income program, which is required by Public Act 229. They're looking at different options, if you had an opportunity to read those, that proposal, but they're looking at reaching out to low-income households, providing like new refrigerators and education, LED lighting kits, things like that. There's also a pretty extensive commercial program. The, you know, they have an outreach program where they will actually reach out to our commercial customers and present options for energy savings, and, you know, they have the expertise and the experts, you know, for that. But it's very similar to programs that we've run in the past. Is, are there any questions on the EWR?
Is it gonna be easy for residents to find the link, find a way to find this information out, and request the information, or request a savings?
Yeah, so we'll have the link on our website. We'll put it on social media. You know, we can put it, you know, like on the radio, different ways, wherever we can advertise, but we have to meet this 1.5%, so it's gonna be in our best interest to put this out there for the public. But yes, it will be readily available.
Can we put it on our app? A link on our app for that? Phil? Okay. Ask it. Thank you.
So I'm just a little confused on how it's gonna get paid for. How does it, how does that work?
So it has to be a separate line item on the electric bill. So every customer is gonna be paying into it. The way for residential, it's gonna be based on energy usage. So it'll be a percentage of their energy use, just like right now, you know, we have a rate per kilowatt hour. This'll be a small fraction of that. And we're guessing, based on my preliminary calculations, about 2.3%, 2.3% increase in rates, but it's, if you take 2.3% of about 10 and 1/2 cents, that's what we're looking at, you know, per month. I don't have those figures in front of me, but it's a fraction. But it'll be a separate line item on everyone's bill.
Just to reiterate on that, Mr. Percola, this program will be a 2.3. Had we opted into the state instead, it would be 3.4, and regardless, we have to opt into one of the two, correct?
We need to run a program, yes.
Thank you.
So the deadline for the state's program is July 1st. So if we don't go with Franklin, then we have to join the states before the end of this month. But that's correct.
Thank you.
So what we're looking for tonight is just to opt in. So later on, like in August timeframe, we need to approve an energy waste reduction plan. So if we do opt into MPPA's program today, they will prepare a plan for us, and we need to approve that, and, you know, later this year. The target is before, like by the end of August.
So at what point would residents expect to see this increase appear on their bill?
Yeah, it'll start January of 2026.
2026, okay. Thank you.
Sumo approval. Support.
Further discussion on this item. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Councilor Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes.
Thank you.
New business. Item number 10. Approval purchase of Glock 9mm Public Safety.
Administration is requesting city council approval to purchase 34 Glock 9mm pistols. Public safety would be trading in their current Glock 9mm pistols, and the credit of $8,980 would be put towards this purchase. Purchase price after trade-in is $15,908. Administration is seeking approval to use forfeiture funds in the amount of $15,908. This is an item that has been very important, a big ask from our officers, and, you know, what's different from these Glocks versus the ones we have in service today? I'll let Director Goodwood talk about that.
Good evening, council. This was brought to me by the officers, and the difference between the Glock we carry now and the Glock we would be purchasing is it will have an aim point sight on it, like we have on our rifles. It's, it's, it's the trend in, in the industry right now is using an optic. You can have both eyes open. It improves your accuracy. It improves your, you can have two eyes open, so you can, you can see better. It is a, even from the supplier, it's a big recruitment and retention tool. Officers are really into this. And again, just the ability to improve their shooting, they like it. Our guns do not have the ability to have a sight put on them. This is done right at Glock, the Glock factory. It's called a COA, but it's, it's an aim point sight. All it is, is a red dot in a window, in a glass window. So that, you know, instead of trying to find, you know, get on your iron sights, it's, it's looking at a red dot. It's not a laser, anything like that. It's just a red dot in a glass window. And what that dot is on is, if you're on the bullseye on a target, that's, and that red dot's on it, that's where you should be hitting. So again, I looked, it was brought to me, and I started looking into this. This is the trend in law enforcement. The state police went to this a little over a year ago. In Ohio, a department, Ohio's been using these for 10 years. I mean, there's different, there's all kinds of different brands of optics. This would be, what I really liked about this is we carry Glocks now, they're so dependable, they're, they're great guns. But it's done right at the Glock factory. They have a contract with this aim point, COA sight, it's called, so I was hoping to get approval on it.
I'll move approval.
I'll second, or whatever. Further discussion on this item.
I just have a question. So when you're pointing a gun at somebody, or at a target, does that red dot show up on the target?
No, it's in the glass.
Oh, it's in the, okay. So it's in the scope, basically, or what?
It's, it's a little flat piece of glass.
Okay.
You know, it's not a scope. It's not, you know, it's, it's just a little window you're looking into, and with that red dot in it. So it's, like I said, it doesn't project out onto anything.
Okay.
And it's, it's a, it's a thing that really helps with accuracy, so.
Further discussion on this item. Mr. Demme, please call roll.
Councilor Boshaw?
Yes.
Councilor Dubois?
Yes.
Councilor Moore?
Yes.
Councilor Flath?
Yes.
Mayor Amel?
Yes. New business. Item number 11. Approval tip 411 Public Safety.
Administration is seeking city council approval to use $10,692 in opioid grant funds they receive from Delta County. The funds will be used to enter in a three-year agreement with tip 411, which is an app that is used for anonymous tips and for sharing of information from the department to the public. The 36-month subscription term is $10,692. And I'll let Director Goodwood talk about the selection of tip 411.
Yeah, so our most important tool is for information is the public. If, if it's not being reported to us unless we're finding it out on patrol, it, it comes to us via the public. And a lot of times, information is not shared with us because they feel it's not gonna be anonymous, and they don't, they don't want their, it to be reported, their name was put out there. They don't want it tied to them, because they're, they're worried of retaliation, retribution, if, if it's found out. So with this tip 411 app, you know, it's, it's cross-country. Many law enforcement agencies have it. It's specifically for that, to leave anonymous tips. When we had the presentation on it, I even asked, I said, well, is there any, say we get a tip, there's a crime in progress, like a serious violent crime in progress that we could respond to, like this, someone was able to get this out, the victim, or, or some, a witness. I said, can I go, is there any way I can get a search warrant to find out? There's no way to find out who left that tip. There is a way, they can, if they want to provide their information, they can, but they, they send that tip anonymously, it stays anonymous, like, and it's a, it's a great tool. You know, there's success stories, you know, that you read about across the country because of the tip 41. One thing, especially in our fight against drugs in our community, is knowing who has them, when they're coming into town. And this is the ability, I was involved with the, this year, this past winter, at the Rapid River Meeting, overdose awareness meeting, I was part of that. And this was a subject that was brought up. As people want to be anonymous, they're afraid to tell them, well, if they want to stay anonymous, we'll keep them anonymous, but they don't trust that. They don't trust sending an email and stuff like that. They just, you know, that was brought to my attention, that it was feared their name would still get out there, that they made a report on, on, on something. This is the way around that. There's no way, if, if they want to be anonymous, they send a text, and it's sent. The other benefits of this is we can have different subject lines. We have a drug take, take-back box at our department. Anybody can come. box at our department. Anybody can come and drop off their prescription meds. Now we have, I have a Narcan dispenser there where people can come and get free boxes of Narcan. Um, we can put that on there. We have the, our angel program to, to help with, uh, people battling addiction. We can put that on there, how to access it. The overdose awareness group, I'm part of, uh, Face Addiction Now, that's a group where we have, uh, monthly meetings that families and addicted individuals come and, and share their story. It's, it's quite interesting. I'm part of the overdose awareness group. I'm part of the fan group. And we can put this all on there as resources. People can click on this on our app. Uh, we have, say there's a, a serious accident, we can share this information on this app. It would send that information out. Uh, you know, Lincoln accident, Lincoln Lonington is closed, divert, you know, on the First Avenue North, the 30th Street, uh, stuff like that. We can, we can put that out there and it would be tied on, uh, into our Facebook page also to send messaging. So it's, it's, it's not just the tip tool. That's the main part of this. Um, and fortunately, uh, with Kim Peterson's help, applied for this, uh, grant through, through Delta County, and we were fortunate enough to be awarded this money for this, for this app, so.
Who's going to filter all these?
Um, we would probably tie it to supervisors would be checking on it. And, and I don't know all the details. I was given it on, on a presentation a while back, uh, but that's what it would be. Not every single officer's going to have access to it. It would be, we would have supervisors tied into it, our detectives, um, so that it is monitored, uh, that we, you know, when these tips, if we're not monitoring it, what good is it if we're not checking it? Obviously we would be checking it all the time to make sure that we, and it might even alert us to say that. I, I don't want to say that for sure, but I'm, um, I don't remember. That might be what it does too, that certain users are alerted when they're given permissions.
Yeah, um, I was glad to see Michigan pass this, what, last year to approve this app. Some around their legislation approved this. I had a presentation on it as well and it was really interesting to see how this works for the community-based, uh, tip line. Uh, it's an amazing app and it's great for sense of security for youth too, or anyone that has access to this app while they're around the community. Uh, it's a good way to, uh, provide resources and safety for them. So I did see a presentation, so let's really go. Um, I have a motion to approve it.
Support.
Further discussion on this item. Mr. Demay, please call roll.
Councilor Dubois.
Yes.
Councilor Flah.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Councilor Boshaw.
Yes.
Mayor Amel.
Yes. I guess I have one question. I'm sorry. How long do we have the grant for? Like how long?
Three, this will be, this, this amount of money covers a three-year contract. So, thank you.
Moving on to appointments. We have one appointment to make this evening, appointed by city council. We have a planning commission application from Stacy Lake, which I believe we've had for a couple of weeks. No concerns? All right. Uh, who, who makes that notification to Ms. Lake, yourself or Mr. Walker or Mr. Demay? Okay, please communicate. Stacy Lake has been appointed to the planning commission. Thank you. Moving on to more opportunities to serve your community. You can join the Board of Library Trustees. There's one vacancy there. You can join the Historic Preservation Commission. There's one vacancy there. You can join the Housing Commission. There's one vacancy there. There are two vacancies on the Planning Commission. There's one vacancy on the Recreation Advisory Board and one vacancy and two alternates on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Walker implores that you please, please come and help in that department. Moving on to board, commission and committee reports. None for you, going to report, Mr. Flath.
I have nothing to report, but it, well, I have nothing more reports to report, but I have a story, so I'll share that with me.
Let's wait, let's wait here for like maybe announcements or something else.
All right, I'll wait for that. I wanted to get it out now, but I'll wait.
Mr. Short and Sweet over here. Mr. Boshaw.
The Electrical Advisory Committee met last week. I mentioned that at our meeting on Monday, but the, uh, as far as the update, uh, there were the general operations, uh, department update with poll testing, replacements, uh, the energy waste reduction program that we approved this evening. And I'll repeat for the benefit of those at home, uh, one of the things that they discussed were, uh, was, uh, Escanaba's electrical rates compared to, uh, national rates. And it was mentioned and they, the chair of the committee asked me to relay to council and, uh, advertise it or publicize it in the community that our rates are, uh, at the, if you want to call it bottom 20th percentile on the national level, meaning 80% of the country is paying higher electrical rates than we are. So, that's all I have there.
Thank you.
I have none.
Okay. Moving on to storytime with Uncle Todd.
Okay. I just have some, uh, Public Works, that's what I said. I want to say, um, uh, two stories, uh, two different vehicles and two different people in each vehicle, uh, stopped the other day. I seen him get out and help a lady find her dog, um, which I thought was really nice. Uh, the second time I seen him, uh, this, earlier this week, stopped and let an elderly lady cross the street. So I thought that was nice. A lot of times they don't get the recognition that they're doing a good job, so I just want to say they're all doing a great job. This storytime's over.
Thank you, Uncle Todd. Moving on to general public comment. If you wish to make comment, please approach the podium, state your name and place of residence.
Can I make an announcement?
As soon as we're done with general public comment. They're very frisky up here.
I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure if you were.
If you wish to make general public comment, please approach the podium, state your name and place of residence and do it quickly because Karen has something to say. Hearing none, we move on.
In Hannah Escanaba is having a planting party on Saturday at 10 o'clock in the park right, um, at the intersection of the beach road and the park road. Um, we're going to be planting 20 areas, um, trees and shrubs. So about 10 o'clock, bring a shovel, gloves and a five-gallon bucket and we're going to have some fun.
Very good.
I do not have an announcement, but I have a request, proposal, suggestion. Our first meeting of July is on Thursday, the 3rd. Most people, all people have, should have Friday off. Some people have Thursday off. I would suggest, request, propose that we cancel that meeting so people can get on with their weekend.
I have no issues as long as we don't have anything pressing. I have no problem.
I asked the manager and...
I brought it up to staff too and there were no concerns.
I'll accept his...
I'll make a motion to cancel that meeting.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other announcements? School's out, summer's happening, um, all kinds of permissions for parties and things, so, uh, enjoy all of the activities because we are now a thriving, vibrant community that's continuing to grow and this is a pretty exciting place to live.
I do have one last thing.
Better be better than mine.
Hopefully we can support and cheer on our Escanaba High School softball team. They are moving down to semifinals. Saturday they play in Alma, Michigan. Um, they play at noon and if we win that, we go at 2:00 for the, uh, semifinal championship. Um, so good luck to our Escanaba High School softball girls. Very good. Seeking a motion to adjourn.
So.
So.